All right, good evening, everybody. Today is Tuesday, January 11th. It's the monthly meeting of the planning board. First thing we'd like to do is do the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great, thank you. Our first item on the agenda is a presentation from Bob Weiss and Jeff and Max Tootus.
Max Tootus.
Max Tootus from Beta. Well, the first one would be from Bob on the complete streets policy.
I'm sorry, I have it reversed. It's actually Jeff doing the question.
Oh, sorry. Okay, Jeff, I'm reading the...
We'll do it together. I'll introduce Jeff.
All right, if you guys could go ahead and...
Okay, thank you, Mr. Jeff. Bob Weiss, Economic Development Director, Planning Director for the town of Millis. And, well, the first thing we're going to talk to right now will be the complete streets policy. And the other thing I will say is that this is going to be a policy and not so much regulation and bylaws and things of that nature. So I'll introduce the expert, Jeff Max Tootus, who is with Beta Group. And I think we're all familiar with Beta Group is they do peer review for us. So Jeff, why don't you take it over?
Thanks, Bob. So I just have a brief presentation just to give you an overview of the MAST DOT program. And then we could go to any questions or if you have questions during the presentation, that's fine also. So I manage a lot of these projects for different communities, transportation planner. It's not all I do, but there's a lot of activity and work in pedestrian, bicycle, complete streets, traffic calming now. So it's, in the past 10 or 15 years, there's been a lot more activity in this type of field. So just, this is the MAST DOT definition of complete streets. It's really a street that provides for all travel modes, for safety, accessibility, mobility, and really for people of all ages and abilities, including ADA compliance. So it's important, if you can address the mobility and safety for young children and the elderly in town, pretty much everybody else is good. So as the population ages, you know, it's good to provide, you know, walking opportunities for them. So that's really what a complete streets is, is for all travel modes. So there's three tiers in the MAST DOT program, and you can advance to the next tier until you complete the previous one. So I'll just briefly go through these. So Tier One is, and Bob was talking about the policy, the town needs to adopt a complete streets policy and undergo training. So the policy is really to facilitate those improvements for those modes, primarily pedestrians, bicycles, can be transit, can be safety for traffic also. But the policy, as Bob said, it's not a requirement. It's really, the state wants the policy to say, any project you look at in the future, you'll consider complete streets as part of the project. Doesn't mean you have to include it, doesn't mean you have to adopt it. Not every street or roadway is feasible for complete streets. You know, everyone knows that. But if you're looking at a new roadway project, a new intersection and improvement, the policy want, the state wants the policy to say, you'll look at and consider complete streets as part of that project. And that's really the only responsibility that you have on that. It's a rolling submittal, you can submit that, you know, at any time. It's approved by the highest governance in the town, typically a city board in town would have to approve that. And the only other condition of Tier One is at least one member of the community has to complete a training class at MAST DOT. It's virtual now, I think it's three or four hours. So at least one member of the town, town staff, Bob, who can be more than one person, would just have to complete that training. I've taken it, you know, a lot of people have taken it. It's a good class, it's worthwhile. So once, once you have the policy approved, submit it to MAST DOT, they'll approve it, have the training class sometime, you know, and then you can move on to Tier Two. So Tier Two is a prioritization plan, and what you do in Tier Two is identify at least 15 projects in town which will be complete streets. So those can be anything from, you know, sidewalks, safety improvements, crosswalks, signals, bicycle lanes, traffic calming, there's a whole, whole suite of projects we can consider. We do preliminary cost estimates for those. There can be more than 15 projects, but you have to add at least 15. There's a $38,000 reimbursement to the town, so if Beta does the work, you, the town would pay Beta, but you get reimbursed fully, 100%, $38,000 to do the work. So it doesn't cost the town anything. The submittals on complete streets, the round one for 2022 will be April 1st. I would say you probably can't make that by the time you put an application in for the Tier Two reimbursement. It's probably going to be, you probably can't finish the work by April 1st. You're probably looking at a round two submittal by September 1st, 2022. Once the plan is approved by the town and approved by MAST DOT, then you can move on to Tier Three, which are eligible for up to $400,000 for construction funding for one or more projects. Same kind of rounds, the rounds are basically six months apart for those. The only thing on Tier Three, the funding does not cover the cost of design. So the town would have to cover the cost of design for those projects, but the $400,000 is eligible for construction, and we would help the town at no cost. We typically do those applications for the town at no cost. Does anyone have any questions, or would you like me to just finish my slides at this point?
So on that one, so you would go ahead and we prioritize, we determine 15 projects. So you said it could be like sidewalks. So if we said in Millis, hey, listen, we've got crummy sidewalks, we could work on 15 sidewalks. There's no specific, we don't have to make, you know, bike lanes or not, you know, not the bike lanes.
Technically, you could, they do like to see a little bit of range of projects, you know, but you technically don't have to have bike lanes. They like to see a little bit of mix of projects, but really what you're shooting for is, say you have 15 projects, you're going to prioritize those projects from some one to 15. The ones at the top are the ones you're going to be applying for, for the $400,000. So you want to prioritize those projects. If you want one or two sidewalk projects, those will be up at the top, one and two. When you submit the application for the infrastructure improvements, that's, those are typically the projects. You wouldn't typically have a list of 15, and your 15th project would be priority for going for funding. So has to make sense generally.
And I have another question. So on complete streets, so, so I drive through Millis. So when the traffic starts at the center of town and it backs all the way up down to the bowling alley, is there ever any priority for the cars in these complete streets? Because what I've seen in other areas is, it seems that every other, as a commuter, it seems like we're highly concentrated on biking and walking, which is all good, but the commuter has been left in the dust and we're sitting in more traffic. And that's, that's one question I have is, is that what would be nice is, could we synchronize the lights? So the lights, so the traffic close better? Could that be part of the complete streets package to make everyone's commute safer, but maybe so you moved?
If it's, under this program, and there are other programs for what you're talking about, there's the bottleneck congestion program that came out recently. Under this program, it has to be tied for motorists generally to safety. So if you can make the case for safety improvement that also includes reducing delay and queuing in intersections tied to safety, you can make that case. But you generally can't do it just for reducing delay in intersection for motorists.
Yes. It's just as a commuter and, you know, unfortunately, I work in construction, we do, I have to travel a lot, and I spend a lot of time in traffic. And over the past, you know, 25 years, it's just, you know, Boston, the Boston area has made some of the worst traffic in the nation. We are up in the top, I think in the top five. So it just, it just would be nice to make sure that that's...
There are other programs that are better for that, if they focus on traffic. Like I said, the state just had an intersection bottleneck funding grant that I think just passed, it may have another round. But we, we can talk to you about opportunities for some of those, some of those issues. The other thing about the projects, these are on town jurisdiction roadways only, so it doesn't include...
No, 109 doesn't count.
So 109, under state jurisdiction, it would count.
But to that point, Village Street might. Because Village Street, I don't know if you're aware, Village Street runs parallel to 109 and is a, used as a cut through coming from, well, heading in either direction. The tie-up trying to get from Village Street at the town, almost close to the town line, from Village out onto 109 in the morning, it's the same, it backs up easily 20, 30 cars. And I drive it every morning. And so that, that's, maybe that's something to look into. Because we do have, we do have a couple of streets that are, were designed as backroads, and they just because of their beginning and ending points have turned into huge, Forest Street is another one, huge cut-through street.
Dover Road.
Dover Road is a huge cut-through street.
And Dover Road, they used to be able, they have some side streets that you could, you know, you could go, and now they made those so you can't cut down the side streets to go through. So unfortunately, what's happened with the traffic is, you know, because obviously, you know, people don't want people blasting through their neighborhood, I got it, but we're basically bottlenecking everybody into giant lines that we all have to wait in, in our own town and along the way. So it would be nice if, it would be nice if some of these programs worked for, like I said, love, I love bikers, I love, I love pedestrians, but, you know, realistically, I have to get up every day and go to work, and it would be nice if...
There are, there are grant programs for that, unfortunately. This one isn't best suited for that.
You know, it's interesting you mention these streets, because these streets are two different, are all different streets at different times. When there's backups because of the commuters, the reason for that, there's too many cars for the streets.
That sounds good, but counterpoint...
At the other times...
Counterpoint on that, Bob, is, is that's great. So I'll just jump on the T bus. Oh, we don't have one in Millis. Oh, wait a minute, let me go to Norfolk. Oh, wait a minute, I can't get on because there's no parking. So go ahead.
Thank you. I'll get to that too, but actually, we can get to that in the next discussion too. The other times, we see, we look at those streets, and we look at streets where the speed is way beyond the limit. And that presents a danger to pedestrians and to bikes, which is more the discussion right here. But I understand the problem that most people see with 109, or see with Village Street or with Dover Road, because most of the times, we see them when we are commuting. I mean, I see them when I commute, but I also see them when I'm here during the day. We're looking at a couple of housing projects that are going to be on Main Street. And it's unbelievable that somebody is going to allow their children to cross Main Street where cars are going 50 miles an hour. It makes no sense. So this is more what this program is for. And as Jeff has mentioned, there are programs that we can, we can look at and employ that will help the commuter times. It's almost like these roads exist as different roads in different times.
No, I'd agree with that.
Oh, Mr. Chair. To that point, the speed on Village Street, which I live on Village Street, and I have a Millis police officer in front of my house at the end of my driveway, I mean, I give the Millis Police Department all the respect in the world, they are out there just on my side street at least twice a week. There is somebody posted somewhere on Village Street, either in the morning or in the afternoon every single day. And it is, part of the problem is that because the bottleneck, the backup is so bad on 109, that when people drive down Village Street, they try to speed up and get around it. And my house is 30 miles an hour. The speed limit in front of my front door is 30 miles an hour. And I watch people doing 45 up and down my street every single day. And it's, I have a son that's just learning to drive, and it is really hard trying to teach a kid to pull out from zero, from a dead stop to 45 miles an hour so you don't get hit. So the speed absolutely is a factor, but I think a lot of that is a result of the, all the backups on 109. So between you and I as Economic Development Committee, I think that is something that we, I'd like to see if we could also start looking into, to go along with this.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
So a quick question, some of these roads that we're referencing, and excuse me, I have some West Coast bias, that's where I grew up. Out here, the roads are essentially, a lot of them were horse trails, I feel like at one point that ended up becoming paved, and we have backwards that are exceedingly narrow. So how does the project typically approach an accommodation for bike lanes on a complete street? I mean, would that be the case for every road that we're mentioning, or are we just talking about bits and pieces determined based on each one?
No, it's, it's based on the specifics of the roadway. You can't put bike lanes on a road that's 20 feet wide.
Right.
It just doesn't work. Now, there are opportunities maybe for bike accommodation to have a little wider shoulder on some roadways, but it's, it's project by project basis. It's not saying bike lanes across the board, it's just, it's where they make sense. We've worked in a lot of towns with narrow, narrow roadways and, you know, rural type roadways, did a project recently in Sudbury. We've done even more rural projects in Beckett and the Berkshires. There's just not opportunities for, you know, bike lanes on those facilities.
Right.
Unless you want to have a separated...
So I guess the question then is, what is the program entailed to do when you're talking about working in Sudbury or the Berkshires on narrow roads? What is the aim of the program?
Oh, yeah. In some places, we had, you know, paths, we had wider shoulders. We did have, the town was interested in a separated, shared facility, pedestrian bike facility in some locations. And a lot, some locations are just better crosswalks.
Yep.
Reducing the crosswalk distance, speeds, some traffic calming measures in neighborhoods. So it's that, that whole, that whole palette of, and I have it actually, I could go to the next slide and kind of talk about that.
All right.
It's not, it's not to say every road in town is going to have a five-foot bike lane. That's not the intent.
Okay.
It's really to look at issues and opportunities for improvement on safety, mobility for all modes. Most of the time, for this, this program, it's bicycles and pedestrians, but it can't include safety for motorists. If you had an intersection that was unsafe, had a high crash rate...
That would be a primary concern for a number of our roads.
The signals, particularly, you know, update the pedestrian signals, countdown signals, audible, and retime the signal, you know, can be fair game for a project.
Okay, great, thank you.
Safety for all modes.
Yeah, that's very helpful.
Okay, so that, this has been one of my, I'm the planning board rep for the Economic Development Committee, and that's been one of my questions all along, has been, part of our issue is that because our roads are so narrow, and we had this with a prior special permit not too long ago, where a lot of the residents, the Butters, wanted the develop, wanted us to require the developer to widen the street and put in the sidewalk. And that's not feasible when, that means you've got to now go through eminent domain. The, the street, the width of the street just wasn't there to accommodate it. And trying to explain to people, well, okay, is everybody on that street going to give up 15 feet of their front lawn so that we can do all of this? And the cost of eminent domain and the length of time that that takes. So my question, as we've been kind of going through with this, is that I was looking at it as a lot of the streets in Millis, how are they going to accompany bike lanes? So what you're saying is, this can have, can be the same as just some better crosswalks. I mean, we have, as Bob was saying, as I said, I live on Village Street. I live on a dead-end street off of Village, right on the corner. There's another subdivision immediately across from me. So, and there are kids that are crossing from these two subdivisions. So would an idea be having a, getting a project where you could put in sidewalks there with like a flashing, crossing sign or something?
Rectangular, rapid flashing beacon.
Right, so those ideas that can be, okay, because that was my, I was like, how are we going to do all of this in Millis with so many little narrow roads?
Curb extensions in intersection, so tighten the radius a little bit, reduce the crosswalk distance.
Because those are projects, I think there, I can think of a dozen things right off the top of my head, as Josh just said, that we could really...
Exactly. They don't all have to be $400,000 projects, but when you do the application, you can cobble together, say, five or six or eight projects for $400,000 and submit them all as a package.
Okay, great, thank you for clarifying that.
So this slide will provide a little bit more information, you know, on the plan of what you're asking. So, you know, the plan is really working with us and the town identifying those projects or problem areas. And, you know, great, great projects are around where people are, right? So schools are perfect, you know, looking to improve sidewalks, put sidewalks in where they're not there, put school zones in, flashing beacons in, could even be a pedestrian signal, you know, if it's needed, handicap ramps, those are, those are all great projects. Other areas in town where people, you know, congregate, you know, libraries, town center, you know, shopping and so forth. And then what we do is we evaluate those projects, we do a series of site visits, we look at the geometrics, the volumes, as I mentioned, the crash data, any gaps. So if there's a gap in, say, a sidewalk network, that, that would be, that might be a nice project. Safety issues, ADA compliance, we have data from MAST DOT, MAPC, also the town, use town data. We have a series of GIS maps, we do concepts, we don't have to do a concept for every project, but the concept, we have to do cost estimates, so if we have to lay out a concept, it gives us a better sense of what the cost will be. So you have a cost for every project. As I mentioned before, it's got to be on a non-state jurisdiction roadway. And then that, those projects are scored and then ranked, and we'll give you a ranking based on the criteria we have, but it's ultimately for the town, it's whatever ranking you want to have at the end of the day. And we meet to discuss those, those rankings. And this is, this is what the plan looks like. This is the actual plan that goes to the state. It's really just a spreadsheet matrix. So when you submit the plan, this is it. And this is just an example of Ashburnham we did, did a couple of years ago. And every project we've worked on the plan, the town has received funding. So it's a good, good track record, you're likely, nothing's guaranteed, but you're pretty likely to get funding. And, you know, it shows the project, the description, the location, the limits, you know, the cost, the cost is shown over here also. So that's what goes to the state. We also develop a report that goes to the town that summarizes this information, the methodology, the findings, so you receive a complete streets report. This is good for five years for the state, so once you do this, you can't add any projects for five years. You're unlikely to build 15 or 20 projects on the list anyways, but not through this program. But once you go through that and you receive $400,000, then you can't receive it again for, I think it's four years. So you want to, you want to give it your best, best projects, you know, first when you get there. And just the next steps are really just a letter of intent that goes to MAST DOT. You have to improve a complete streets policy, which, you know, I've given Bob several examples. You have to complete the training, and then after Tier One, you submit, you submit an application to MAST DOT for Tier Two to get the funding for the reimbursement for the $38,000 to do the plan. So there's just a little bit of work to get going, but it seems like a lot here, the process is actually pretty easy. It's, I think it's in its fifth year, so DOT has worked out a lot of the kinks over the last few years, and we've done it with several communities. So it's actually a pretty good program, and it's, it's pretty easy once you get into it.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Bob, our complete streets policy is pretty much completed. We're ready to present, the Economic Development Committee is ready to present it to the Board of Selectment, correct? Or, excuse me, Select Board?
I think so. We wanted to, that's why we're here tonight, wanted to run the idea by the planning board. And I know we presented the draft to the board, and have the board, the Economic Development Committee, and, you know, some other key players in town endorse and support it so that we can bring it to the select board.
And do we, have we had somebody complete the training?
No, we haven't.
Okay.
We were going to have one person, we had one person lined up for the, on the Economic Development Committee, but she was not, she hasn't been around lately, so...
We can talk...
We will have one, that I know.
You don't have to complete it until you submit the Tier Two plan to the state, so you do have some time.
Yes, it's, it would be nice to find a champion for it in town.
We're going to bring in straws to the next meeting. You can have that short straw. All right, well, that sounds good. Thank you for the presentation.
Can I ask one more question, please?
Go ahead, please.
Jeff, one other question that Bob and I had discussed earlier at one of our meetings was, while we have the policy that we've, you know, that has been drafted, that we'll eventually be presenting, is that it's, covers a lot, but it is somewhat generalized. Is there, I mean, I know there are multiple resources that we can direct developers and say, you need to look at this resource, you need to look at that resource. Is there something that's a little more streamlined that both this board can have access to as well as saying to developers, you know, when you, when you're directing them to some, to a dozen different places, and say, incorporate all these ideas, especially if it's a small local developer, if it's somebody that's doing it for the first time and it's not a major developer, and for those of us that are going, again, going to have to deal with it in this board and, you know, trying to take in those hundreds and hundreds of pages of concepts, is there something either that you're, that Beta or, I'm sure the state has not narrowed anything down, but somewhere that kind of gives, not as broken, not as basic as you've given here, which I greatly appreciate, because it's clarified a lot in my mind, having talked about it for a few months and being all conceptual, just conceptual, something that, that we can use in saying, okay, almost like a Chekhov list, saying, these are the different concepts we want you, we want a developer to think of?
Well, it could be the plan itself, the prioritization plan. It could be here, here are 15 or 20 projects. And if it falls within, you know, a development project, you say, and you've got that documented, so it shows this, this is the town's desire to prioritize projects, we want these improvements.
Okay.
The policy itself is only a few pages, but it's, it's general, it's a policy. But really, the state wants, you know, the towns to change the thinking when you're doing new projects, and when I think about pedestrian and bicycle, alternative modes, safety. So any project, so if a development project that came in and wasn't included, you'd still want to talk, you know, talk to the developer and say, we'd like to consider sidewalks, curb extensions here, a pedestrian signal, you know, those type of things. Once the plan's completed, it also helps with some of these other funding programs too, like a master plan, a bottleneck project. So these kind of, these things kind of feed on each other. So yes, we have complete streets, we have a policy. So yes, we have complete streets, we have a policy, we have a plan, we have that in place. It can help receiving other funding sources also. So I don't know if that answers your question, but the, you know, the plan itself, once you have that, then you can point to those projects. And say, we, we've adopted these projects. We want to discuss with you as mitigation for development about, you know, helping us, you know, get part of the way there.
Well, I had just a different thought on that. So can we, can we do it where, you know, the developer maybe does one part, but we're able to get some funding to, you know, so they went in and they get an apron ready for the sidewalk as part of their plan anyhow, so, because hey, we had to put a sidewalk in anyhow. And, but it was tied into where, you know, the town maybe got funding to, you know, put the crosswalk in.
Yeah, I don't think we should stick it on the developer, but I think if we can, if we can, if we can tooth it where we can get more, you know, more bang for the buck, that may be something that we may want to look at.
No, I was just, my concern was, say, for a subdivision where, under the subdivision law, you have to put in a sidewalk.
Right.
So I don't want to have every subdivision that comes in have a developer just say, oh yeah, no, we considered this, we put in a sidewalk. Well, you're not putting in a sidewalk within your, which potentially could just be your three house subdivision that connects those three houses to nothing else. You're doing that because that's, without it, you can't get a special permit, you can't build. So.
But I, I don't think that the developer, I'm going to put in three houses and you're going to have me go and repave half a mile of sidewalks.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about that.
No, and I'm just asking, I just want to be clear on that. So I mean, I, I think in my mind, if we can get it where we can get, we can, we can have them tooth into development and, and, you know, maybe we can make it so.
I was, I was talking more about having some sort of more limited documentation, whether it's something the town of Milis has, I didn't know if it was something the state has. Instead of saying to a developer, have you gone to these five state resources and gone through their dozens to hundreds of pages of, of concepts and figured out if there's anything there you can incorporate into here? But I, see, that was more, so I think, yeah, if we have the plan, as Jeff said, if we've got a plan and it's, has certain projects and we have a developer that's.
Well, we could, what if we, like I said, if he, if we, maybe if we had, when we go to do it, we have things that we would suggest that the developer does. Hey, when you do your, when you do your project, you have your street come out, we would like to have you consider, you know, do you need a, to set up a ramp for ADA or do you need to have a, set up for a crosswalk? Or I think that if we did something like that.
And are those things that would then meet these requirements, you know, this policy? So if, as the chair has suggested, if it's a development that's close to a project that we've already looked at and said, okay, you know, can you do, as the chair said, can you do part A so that we can then do part B? Would that, like, meet those requirements?
Yeah, I mean, the state will accept projects with different funding sources. So one example, this may not be exactly what you're talking about. So say you had a larger project, say you had a million dollar project, right?
Yeah, wish.
Sidewalks or something. So the state will pay the $400,000, but you have to come up with the, the rest of the money. You know, in this case, $600,000 or what, anything over $400,000. You know, maybe that, maybe that's a, you know, a case for a developer or development. So that's perfectly fine. If you have a, it doesn't have to be a $400,000 project or small, it can be larger, but you have to identify that funding source.
Okay. Great, that clarifies a lot in my mind from what we were discussing a couple of months ago.
And then this, I just want to point out, this, this little graphic here, that's the state's guidance report. So you can go online, it's, it's not that long of a report. So everything I'm talking about here tonight is provided in that report in, in more detail.
If I could drill down a little bit on this question. A, a project comes to the, to the planning board and, for a special permit, let's say. So it's going to require a site review. Would that be something that would be rolled into the peer review? Just would, would our, our peer reviews say, have you considered this, this and this?
Well, I, the thing with that is I want to be a little careful because we don't want to get into, personally, I don't want to get into like Boston where you have linkage. Oh, well, you want to build a house. Well, we want to get this, this and this from you. You know, not that we're here to line people's pockets, but if we make Milis so it's, it's not a good place to build, we're going to stop developing. Now, right now, we don't have any sewer capacity, so that's going to change things altogether. But we have to be careful not to be, you know, so, you know, to go after businesses. We want to encourage businesses to come here. So, you know, I think we should be, it should be something where if we could incorporate it in and we could ask the questions, I think that would be better. And then maybe there's something where we could push towards having it done. But I, I wouldn't want to go, be too aggressive on, you know, on, on making, you know, developers do it or they'll just turn away. So I just, I think I would, I would be hesitant in my mind to, to, to be too aggressive, so.
And this is, this is the state program for the town. So this program doesn't get into, you know, subdivision regulations. But you, you can use it as you would like to try to, you know, drive designs for improved safety.
I mean, so like if we had a new development to win, like I said, if we went ahead and we did think about, maybe we did say with, you know, beta, because you guys do the plan review, hey, you've got a big apartment complex going in. Well, we think maybe our sidewalk would be over here, so maybe we could do it where it was. They got the thing set up, we used some funding, we made it safe for everybody, everybody wins. So the state pays for this, you know, we end up with a safer area, the developer ends up with a, a better product and the people that live there end up with a safer and better product. So I think we could work it that way.
Yeah, that's right. It's supposed to, you know, help spur economic development and improve quality of life for residents and visitors. So it's supposed to be a, a tool for that. It's not, it's not supposed to try to deter developers.
All right, good. Well, thank you for that, appreciate it.
If you have any additional questions, you know, feel free to ask them, Bob, if you're invited.
And so was that both of those, Bob? The, oh, zoning changes is the next one?
No, we got, I got one more.
I mean, the other one, the zoning changes.
Zoning changes, I just said it.
I'm sorry, I thought we started with those. Never mind.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jeff.
All right, so, Mr. Chairman, what I'd like to do is a brief presentation. I did this last night also at the select board. And this regards, right now, we're looking at the draft guidelines for the state's legislation under, it's MGL, chapter 40A, section 3A, which is a zoning act applicable to MBTA communities. So no actions required tonight or last night from the select board. But this is all about the zoning requirement that has come down. Last January, the legislature passed a bill that the governor signed and has the intent to reduce the shortage of housing for families in the Boston metropolitan area. And basically, chapter 40A, section 3A requires that MBTA communities, and Milis is an MBTA community, create a sizable multifamily district that allows, as of right, a minimum of 15 units per acre. This doesn't mean we have to have or build a certain number of multifamily units, but we have to create an area where it is a lot easier for developers to create more dense housing. So the good news on this is, and I'm looking at this as, as an opportunity, and many of my colleagues around other communities are also. Good news is we already have areas in the town where most of this exists. Also, let's keep in mind, this is not about affordable housing. This is about a greater density of housing that will allow families, working families, plumbers, police, fire, teachers, younger families to get a foothold in housing. And I'll get into a few of those details. The compliance for this, it's going, we're allowed up until 2025. The immediate compliance is coming up in May, but we've already done all that. We have to submit an information form to DHCD. We have to make sure that our G I S maps, parcel maps are up to date. And we have to make the presentation of the guidelines to the select board, which we did last night. So the next, next benchmark that will be required to comply with will be in about 18 months. It'll be in July of 2023. We'll have to have an action plan and a timeline for the activities that will need to adopt a multifamily zoning district. And again, the final benchmark will be full compliance with adoption of multifamily zoning district by December 31st, 2024. Now, the requirements is that MBTA communities shall have a zoning ordinance or a bylaw that provides for at least one district of reasonable size that will allow multifamily zoning as of right, I underscore that, without age restrictions, so that it is suitable for families with children. The reasonable size for them would be a minimum of 50 acres. We already have a district that allows multifamily housing by special permit.
Can I ask you a question, Bob? So you said so at a reasonable size of 50 acres?
Yeah.
Okay, that's, that's a pretty good sized chunk.
If you mean to the zone, not, the zoning area, the zoning district has to be at least 50 acres.
Yeah, yeah.
Not the project has to be 50 acres.
No, 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 and I don't want to understand that, so. But that, I mean, that, remember, Milis is not that big.
Right.
So, and what, so the question is, and it said on it, is that a requirement?
That is a requirement, right.
Where does it show that?
It's in the guidelines. It's a, now, it's a requirement, it's not a mandate. Don't have to do, they're not going to come out, come after us.
And that's what I'm asking, so what I'm, what I'm asking is, okay, so we have to put a zoning for multiple units in a reasonable area. So what I would say is if, let's say Milis is 100, you know, 100 acres, then that would make it different than another town that had, you know, 500 acres. So, so what I would say is I think we, I don't want to get locked into, well, I would say we should debate or talk about, you know, is, is 50 acres of multiple by right housing? Because then multiple unit, density by rights, meaning that they could take, you know, they could be putting, you know, an apartment complex in your neighborhood.
Mm-hmm, it should be your next door neighbor.
Right, so which is, I'm not trying to be.
Because that, the multifamily, it's this, they're defining it under this new section 3A is 15 units per acre. So I think the first question we need to find out is if we have any, is there any, or which zoning districts? Do we have that even, that, well, no, that are 50 acres?
Right, yeah, I, I just don't, what I don't want to do is get locked into a, you know, oh, it says 50 acres. Well, Milis isn't that big. So what I'd like to say is, I think, I think it's a great idea. I think we should be thinking about, you know, where would, where would a good fit, what areas would, would work well for this.
Right, well, if you look at our town center right now, which the underlying zoning there, it's actually about five zones in that area, but the underlying zoning area is mostly commercial, village, commercial village, residential village, where we do allow up to 12 units per acre. But that's by special permit. So we're, and also there are zoning bonuses there. So that, we've actually limited the number of units per acre there to 21. So theoretically, one can still put the same apartment building in, in those areas. So, but this is by right. So it's not a big, heavy lift over what we have right now. Our, the, in the downtown, the town center itself is about 100, 120 acres, just under 120 acres. So that's, gives, gives us all a, a good idea of what we're talking about in terms of size. The, I mentioned it's a requirement and not a mandate, we don't have to do it. But if we don't do it, if we don't comply, we don't qualify for certain grants. Many of the grants that Jeff just mentioned, Housing Choice Initiative, which is something we would probably want to take a look at because that would have some grants that would help us actually create the district. Mass Works, we talked about working, just before we talked about working with a private developer on infrastructure and that's what the Mass Works project is all about. That's where the state money comes in. So that's what we would not be, so that's the stick, the carrot and stick thing here. Town council has advised us, they sent out an advisory. Site plan review would still be allowed in the new district. As I said, we have two districts right now. I'm thinking about the M C E O D district, which is a mixed use district that does allow for housing like that. And the underlying village districts, as I mentioned, they allow the 12 units per acre, but with density bonuses. So like I say, we're, we're most of the way there already. They defined the location, and this is, I want to bring this up because you mentioned something before about not being, you know, commuters don't have an alternative here unless it's getting their car and drive to, drive over to Norfolk. So the, where the town, this district is not within a half a mile of an existing transit station. What it would, what the requirements are asking is that it be accessible, that the housing be accessible with street patterns, pedestrian connections and near a transit stop. Well, we're talking, we were just talking about those connections with complete streets. And we were talking about a transit node, I, we will be applying to the state's Community One Stop for Growth Program. And we're going to be submitting five projects, one of which, those, I'm tipping my hand here, but one of those projects will be for a transit station in the town center, for transit node for a shuttle bus, perhaps like the shuttle bus they have in Medway or for the junior high school that can get people over to Norfolk Station without the long commute. So it, it's kind of a, this works in pretty well with some of the plans that we're going to be making for the town.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Well, real quick, so you would just reference this, so we're categorized as an adjacent community, is that correct?
Yes.
By definition?
Yes.
So could you quickly just explain the minimum requirement, the 10% for multifamily units and how that would impact our zoning?
I will try.
It, it is a little complicated, as I was going to.
Yeah, if we have, we have about 3,500 units of housing in, in the town.
Right.
So an adjacent community would be responsible for having about 350.
350, right, yeah, okay.
And so we do the math and it's, it's pretty much, that's pretty much what 50 acres of 15 units per acre would yield. So I think we, we have, like I said, we're pretty much on the way there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Do you know how many acres the GAF, the vacant GAF lot is?
12.8. We, somebody actually asked that the other day of us. And, and so we looked it up yesterday, it's, according to the card, it's 12.8, so.
And the Anan Hope facility, that whole?
Yeah, they're about 17.
So those two combined, you're at 30 acres.
Yes.
But, well, the problem being on it is, I mean, to be, you know, the, the GAF, okay, it's, it's, it's open right now. It'd be very, I think it would be hard pressed to develop that. And then the Anan Hope is currently, somebody owns it, they're not.
Right.
Well, I think, sorry, just cut you off, but the, I think the thought is.
Well, I think, sorry, just cut you off, but the, I think the thought is, we should make sure wherever our zoning is, if there is space available, we'll actually do something. Because if we, you know, if we, if we don't have, if, you know, there should be land available to be able to make it happen.
Right, but it can be for future development. I don't think we're mandated to actually build.
Correct.
Right.
So if we're simply trying to meet the requirements, and fifteen units per acre, to get to three hundred and fifty units, that's not fifty acres, that's only thirty acres. Not even thirty acres, it's twenty-five acres or whatever.
Okay, that makes, that's, that's about right. So, but still, they would like to see us do fifty acres, I think is what they consider a reasonable size.
So the district has to be at least fifty acres?
Yeah, right, and I think the, I mean, part of the thing is, as much as, like I said, I think it has to be the right spot in the right location, I think we also ought to make it feasible if it is, you know, so there, there would be a possibility that they could actually...
And when I was going through this before, a couple of months ago, when this, when we were first learning about this, there is, the state can come in and determine reasonableness. So if we make the district, if we designate a particular area as a district, and it's an overlay district, but half of the underlying district is industrial and it's already occupied as industrial use, the state may say, yeah, that's, that's, we're not buying that. Because you've got, I mean, other than what the town, you know, the little bits that the town owns, everything is private. But if you have something that is, the underlying is industrial, has been used as industrial for decades, is fully occupied as industrial, the state may not, they may say, yeah, you're kind of on the right ballpark, but we're only giving you credit for half, so you got to go.
Right, but where do we have fifty acres of our, just all single family homes already? No one's going to come in and buy up thirty homes and turn them down. You've got, so you've got GAF, sorry, one second, GAF, Herman Schu, that whole block all the way around to Ann and Hope, that parcel combined is going to be fifty acres, much of it developable immediately.
But remember, this is saying that you have to be, the, the multifamily use is a density of five of fifteen units per acre. So theoretically, you could go in, I mean, in my neighborhood, where the, on my street, the average size is half an acre, you could go in and buy two lots, and now you can put in fifteen, fifteen units. If that, if the, if it was zoned, so if it's, if you're zoning the area you're talking about, it's not like going in and buying twenty lots, you could go in where those house lots are like, probably like a third of an acre, you buy three lots, you buy three houses, and you can put up fifteen units.
Right.
So it's not an issue of having, necessarily having to go in and, and buy up a ton of it, you don't have to come up with an acre of land. So, and I think that goes to what Mr. Chairman was saying in the beginning of the discussion as, do you want to, we've got to be careful what we do so that you're not having a residential house, residential house, and the one in the middle, now you're, now you're plopping in where this was all developed as single family.
This is the beauty of the area that suggests that, you know?
No, and I agree, yeah.
You put in the middle of residential neighborhood, you're getting incredible pushback from thirty people that don't want, don't want this right in the middle of their homes.
Exactly, that's...
So you almost have to be in a somewhat mixed use or commercial area to accommodate this.
This is going to be a long process.
Also, to your point as well, Alan, if, and Bob, I think you mentioned this, if we want to be near a transit point, right, or a shuttle, or with easy pedestrian access, you're not throwing, you know, a mixed use in the middle of the woods, right, or by the cemetery or something like, you need, frankly, it's going to have to be close to one or nine, because that's our only main point of access with any type of pedestrian mean.
Yeah, the spirit of this whole project from the state is to increase mass transit, to get development at transit points, you know? In many towns with a train station, you're going to build around the train station. We don't have that option, but to be nearer the downtown, and again, some sort of transit point, parking, whatever we need, you know, people can maybe get along without a car closer to downtown.
Or, or get along with one less car.
One less car, sure.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, it, it's not a magic bullet by any means. We take one step, you know, small steps on this. Now, I mentioned the, the one stop for growth program that the state has for economic development. And so we're looking at doing a, a master plan for the, the town center. We haven't really completely defined the town center because we know our, even our MCEOD district was expanded out to Hammond Lane. So, but we're looking for a master plan, and from that, what we can get is, we can go next to, and when I say the projects, these are projects that the state will help us finance, because master planning is not cheap. The second project would be zoning analysis and plan. And that's where we can talk about the mixed use districts, we can talk about some of the other concepts that are out there, like form-based codes and design reviews for the district. And so from that, we can figure out, you know, where, you know, where can we put this district that will make the most sense? And I mentioned, we're also looking at a transit node that would come out probably out of this master plan as well. And then we have been talking to some of the, the larger property owners in the area with, as the, our vice chairman has, has suggested, when, with the Economic Development Committee, we set up a, a summit with the owners of Ann and Hope, and they're amenable to this, so we'll be talking to them sometime in, later on this month, hopefully, we'll be able to have at least a Zoom, a virtual conference with them. And then when the weather warms up, we can have a, you know, face-to-face meeting and bring them into the process. I've also spoken with the owners or the people who are controlling the railroad right away, which most people think, you know, has been all but abandoned. Bay Colony actually used it last week. There's a video of the train that came in with four cars for Tresca. So there, and they're also talking about doing some economic development for the GAF site. So we know we have a lot of, there's a lot of hurdles with the GAF site, of course, but, you know, we keep, try to keep these things going. So there are some, some things to look forward to. That's why I say this is really, could be an opportunity for us in terms of, of planning and rezoning and development, and making it much more easy for developers to come to town.
What do you need from us beyond your presentation here today?
That was it. We're all thinking about it now. So I, I think the next, what I'm going to do next is to apply, we'll be applying to the Community One Stop. And we'll be looking at, hopefully, we'll be looking at some planning, some master planning, a little bit more than, much more, much deeper than what we did this summer with the ULI Technical Assistance Program. That was a good start, but this will be a little bit more involved, and it'll involve, we can involve the property owners in the area. So that'll be the next step.
And can you look into that bottleneck, Bill, and also for...
Yeah, we can do that, I wrote that down.
Yeah, yeah. I think, like I said, I think every, all, you know, several hundred, actually, what is it, 109 is one of the most traveled smaller highways in the state. You know, it would be nice to be able to have people go through Milis and not be stuck looking out the window for who knows how long.
Right, right. And I'm learning all those back road cutbacks, because when I go back to, to town, I'm looking at Hartford Street.
Forty-five or fifty down Village Street. All right, well, thank you, Bob, for that, appreciate it.
Okay, well, thank you all very much. It's good to, to see you folks in person.
Me too. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the fiscal year 23 planning board budget. So we will break out our budget spreadsheet, and basically, Camille, since you put it together, you want to, oh, give us the highlights?
It's basically a level funded budget, level funded budget.
There we go. So we have a level funded budget from last year. So no change. So basically, we're going to do the same thing that we did the year before, which I think we did the year before, was level funded, correct?
Yes.
Can't we request a raise for Camille?
What did we do every year?
I asked to request a raise for Camille every year.
All right, so. All right, so do we have a total in here? Or do we just approve the whole budget?
No, there isn't a total, we just approved the FY 23 budget as prepared.
Okay. All right. Does anyone have, from the board, have any questions on the budget? All right, I make a motion that we approve the FY 23 budget as submitted.
Second.
Motions been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great, thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes from December four.
No, you skipped over the bylaws.
Oh, I missed that, sorry about that. How did you do that? Proposed zoning bylaw amendments discussion.
Okay, the first one is to amend the associate member to the planning board by law.
Do you hear this one?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I must not be, sorry, thank you. Just screwed up my paperwork. I guess Bob's, right after Bob's. Nope.
So Camille, all it does is change, yeah, get a minute.
Yeah.
The term Board of Selectmen to Select Board.
No, it, what it does is, it was suggested by Town Council, right now, the associate, it, it states an associate member to the planning board shall be appointed by the Board of Selectmen for a term of one year, such associate member to act on special permits. Right now, technically, Josh can't vote on...
Site plan, even though...
Right.
So we're looking to change Select Board as well while we're at it, but, so that, at the end, to act on special permits and site plans.
Right. So just in, I'm hoping everyone could pick that up, what we want to do on that is, I don't know if you got picked up on the mic, right now, the associate can only vote on special permits. Because we want to make, have more depth in our board, in case we have members that were out or not attending, we need to, it would be good to have an additional person. So we wanted to change that, to have the associate member on the planning board to be elected by the, the state board, and they would be able to vote on special permits and site plans, so that we would be able to continue our job.
By law, he can't vote on subdivisions, that's part of a regulation, but we can change it to special permits and site plans.
Right. So, any discussion?
No, it's long overdue.
I agree. All right, so I make a motion that we, now, we have to get this to the...
If you want to go forward, if you want to approve, you move forward with this, what we'll have to do is, I can certainly run it by Town Council, but we have to hold a public hearing and put on the warrant for the Springtown meeting, it would be an article as only...
We don't have to send it to Board of Selectmen and have them send it back to us for the public hearing?
Yep, the pro-process of the public hearing, sending it back to them, yep.
Okay. I make a motion that we forward the article to the Select Board to get, hopefully, onto the warrant for the Springtown meeting.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Next item is add IP two districts to Tables Two and Three.
Okay, if I can give a little summary on that one. Mike Jampetro, the building inspector, came upon this one when somebody was looking to do something in the IP two district, he realized that when the IP two district was created in 2008, the Table One Use Regulations was updated, however, Table Two Area Regulations and Table Three Height and Bulk Regulations were not updated to reflect the IP two district. So where this was back in 2008, and I don't know if there's any members on the board other than George, who may remember, this was initiated by the Master Plan Implementation Committee way back when. So Mike wanted to, Mike Jampetro wanted to just have the planning board approve, since there's probably no other change or regulation for the two tables, that using the numbers for the IP district would probably be fine, just to add the IP two district into that table, with the same dimensions, density, front, frontage depth, because on the zoning map, it lists the IP two district, and it does list the first two numbers, the same numbers as the IP district. But he just wanted final confirmation from the planning board that that's a reasonable approach, that they weren't looking to change the area and bulk regulations for that district, and if that's the case, we can do another zoning amendment to a warrant at Springtown meeting, and just add IP two next to IP in those two tables.
Quick question, Camille, okay. What, what is the, is there any major distinction between the two districts? So, I mean, we're talking about uses and, yeah, height regulations, they're all the same, so what...
Yeah. IP one is at one end of town, IP two is at the other.
Was there a reason we created a separate district rather than just calling it IP in both places?
They, I, I can't remember back to 2008 why it was done. In the use table, there's a slight difference. Rich, can I just use your book here for a minute?
That was a long time ago, I don't remember.
And I tried to check back in the minutes, and there's, it was just, it was from the Master Plan Implementation Committee, but there's really no explanation, even in the town report book for 2008, as to why it was done, but the only difference is the use table, IP two has its own...
Yeah, there are a few differences. Example, for community facilities, there are some uses, nonprofit recreational facility is not allowed in IP one, but it's allowed by special permit in IP two.
Does that need to be reflected then on Table Two, when you're talking about use?
No, because use is its own table.
Right, I'm just referring to this kind of cliff note, I guess, that they have included under area regulations. If you look at the column for use under IP, it says any permitted principal structure use, I mean, I guess that'll just refer back to the use regulations.
Right. And if you'd like, in the zoning bylaw book for amended November 3rd, 2008, voted unanimously to change the zoning district by rezoning from Industrial Park IP to Industrial Park Two, IP two, all property currently zoned IP in the portion of the IP district bisected by Route 109 and west of Auburn Road.
No.
So for whatever reason, this district was created for some purpose back in 2008.
I'm fine with it, I don't see a problem.
I don't remember, so.
Yeah. So west of Auburn Road would be, so that's, that's down towards the bowling alley.
Right.
Yeah, IP two is in the western part of town. IP is a very tiny little section on the Medfield line.
Okay, so that's the, yeah, yeah, that's...
Yeah, and I know it's tough to see on your zoning map.
And this is all IP two.
Okay, so that's, that's basically where Tresca was.
Exactly.
So that's Tresca.
Right.
And then the rest is everything else.
What everybody thinks of as the industrial part of town. But as Camille pointed out, the, on the map, which is what takes precedence over the, the map over the bylaws, the map does show that the, the area, the minimum area is, is, is the same, is one acre, and the frontage is the same. So by adding this, really, all we're doing is acknowledging that the lot depth and, you know, the side set are, are going to be the same.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, it makes sense to me, any, any other? Any other comments? All right, so I make a motion that we...
Something's...
Yeah, we add, yeah, we have the IP, IP one and IP two have the same definitions or table.
On the two tables, yes, they're doing Table Three.
All right, motion's made, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is second first?
Oh, did I not second, sorry, I'm sorry. Sorry. Sorry, I made a motion.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
This also will have to be forward to the Select Board, so that we can then hold a public hearing on these two, and I can just combine the two zoning amendments.
All right. Now we can roll on to the minutes. I make a motion that we approve the minutes from December 14th, 2021.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, unforeseen, approval of release of remaining review fees, Barbary Homes, So Barbary Homes was the previous, previous developer of the Dover Road Residence, and they, they gave up the right to do that to Anthology, which is another developer, so they want their review fee money back. And that's what's left in their account.
Yes. And Anthology has paid all of their reviews.
They paid, yeah, they paid all their review fee stuff, so they're all set. So basically, they just asked for their money back.
This didn't incur any costs to us? It's just a fee that-
What happened was Barbary was the initial developer. They did it, they had a funding issue, they stopped for three years. Anthology came and bought, they paid their own review fee, so it's a whole separate ball of wax, and what was remaining in the account was $4,397.25, and they just-
They used the original review? What's, we perform review?
They, Beta had done work. What they do is, basically, they put money into a pot, and then they, they do a draw on it. So the money that was in the pot, all that's remaining of it is $4,000, it's unspent.
So some of it was spent?
Correct.
Yes, it was, it was the originals, it was the funds requested for the scope and fee for construction by Beta. And they did use some of it, and then construction stopped in 2019, and they sold it to Anthology.
And this money's now been, is in a separate pot from Anthology.
Right, okay, thank you.
Yeah, so it's to figure out what it was. All right, so I make a motion that we approve the release of the remaining fees for Barbary Homes of $4,397.25.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, great.
And I have stuff for you to sign after the meeting, so.
Okay.
Schedule March.
I'm in a March meeting.
Yeah, and we should look at a March meeting. And so the update for the town, after we do that, hold on, just a quick one. February, March. Any, any data is good. What do you want, what do you think, Camille? Earlier, later?
Personally, I won't be here the 8th.
Let's not do it on the 8th, then. How about the 15th?
What about the 1st? That's four weeks.
I'm having surgery on the 1st.
Let's do it on the 15th.
Perfect.
All right, March 15th.
Be I'd submerge.
Okay, good.
And as of right now, our meeting for February 8th, are you folks comfortable still meeting in person?
I'm fine until they tell us otherwise.
Hopefully, I will be here. I have federal jury duty for three weeks.
Oh, wow.
I may have put a bullet in my head, be happy by then.
So just a quick update in the town, things that were going on. The DPW building is substantially complete. They've, they finished off the inoccupied, the, the staff building, the built, the garage is complete, and they're actually demoing the inside of the old DPW building. They have to, part of it, if it had been cleaned out by a certain date, or we'd incur additional insurance or something. So that's, that's underway. And what else? And I think that was about it, that I know of that was going on. So, I mean, you know, Glen Island's still building. Beta had done a, in conservation, had gone through and done a review recently on that. And I think other than that, nothing else of particular interest. So, all right, well, with nothing else, unless anyone else has anything, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, all right, good night, everybody.